One it is six forty five P M on January twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty seven, two thousand and twenty five, excuse me. I would like to call to order the finance meeting, finance committee meeting for Lisle Community School District two oh two. Is there any public comment? No?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Next up are the minutes from the November two thousand and twenty four Finance Committee meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review that? We all agree that reflects the November twenty fifth meeting. And on a side note, there was no December meeting, so we're not looking at those. All right, so moving on. Item number four are the transport agreement extensions. That information can be found under item four of the Finance Committee packet. Mr. Wilkinson?
Thank you. So I just wanted to give the Finance Committee an update a little bit on where we are with our transportation agreements and kind of what to expect over the next month or two. First of all, there was, I touched on this last year, there was a recent public act that changed the laws for transportation agreements, where you're now allowed to extend them for up to ten years inclusive of renewals. Under the previous law, extensions were limited to, you kind of had your first three-year contract, and then you could do up to two additional years, and then it was year to year after that unless another provider said, hey, I want you to go out to bid. So that law is no longer in place, and now you're allowed to enter into whatever length you want as a Board of Education, but it can't extend more than ten years. And so when we look at our regular transportation services with Westway Coach, we're actually finishing up our eleventh year with them right now. Last year, we extended for this eleventh year after talking with our attorney who said, you know what, this law is new, it's a little bit gray, a little bit of a gray area, you can go ahead and extend for one more year, but you really need to think about bidding that out the following year. And so that's what we chose to do last year. We extended for that eleventh year with Westway Coach, but now based on our feedback, it's time to go out and go through the bid process. So I'm in the process right now of putting that bid together. It's going to be out on the street here within the next week or so, and then the plan is to bring that bid for approval, depending on how many responses we get and who's interested. We'll go through the process of evaluating those bidders, evaluating those bids, and that would be approved at the March meeting. That's the timeline for our regular transportation. As far as our special ed transportation, we're currently with a part of our SACID cooperative with some other member districts, and we're in our seventh year with Sunrise for special ed transportation. Over the last few years, the members have been very satisfied with the services that Sunrise has provided. They've been able to get the drivers, they've been able to provide good services, and so we initiated discussions with them about an extension, and they proposed three options. They said if you want to do a one-year extension, it would be a six and a half percent increase. For a two-year extension would be a five percent increase each year, and if we wanted to extend it three years to get to that ten-year max, they offered us four and a half percent each year for those three years. After some back and forth, some conversations with a few of the member districts in Sunrise, they ended up coming down to four percent, which is what they're asking for for a three-year extension. In general, the member districts would like to go for that full three years. Again, they've been happy with the services, they'd like to continue that partnership, continue that relationship for the next three years, and so that's what the group is moving forward with. I just wanted to get kind of the committee's approval here to move in that direction. Staying with the other districts is extremely important because we benefit from sharing some of those routes. A lot of our students go to the same locations, and so by being a part of this cooperative, being a part of this joint bid, we end up getting those routes for half the cost of if we had to do it ourselves. So that's why it's important to stay with those other member districts. So I guess I'll finish out here with the other transportation provider. Last year, we went through the bidding process for kind of our as-needed transportation. So this is our McKinney Vento students, our students in transition, some of the smaller groups, and we went through the bidding process. We entered into an agreement with Rich Lee Vans, it's a three-year contract. We've been pleased with their services so far this year, and so we will continue under that contract for next year, and those rates are already part of the previous bid. So I guess I just need, I guess verbal approval that we can continue to work with Sunrise, pursue that three-year extension of four percent with the other member districts, and so I don't know if anybody has any questions or any other thoughts regarding that contract.
No.
Does anyone have any questions?
No, it makes sense.
It does seem like an efficient way to deal with things. Thank you very much.
Okay, so we will move in that direction, and then we will also work on the regular transportation bid for the March meeting.
Thank you. All right, so the next item is the resolution authorizing the sale of personal property. That information can be found under the regular board meeting packets, item seven A six. Mr. Wilkinson?
So with the elementary, the refresh of the elementary computers for the staff, we've had some laptops, about twenty, that have come available, and we'd like to try something a little bit different this time around. Historically, our current practice has been to, you know, when we do a staff refresh of laptops, we retain some of those devices, and we kind of use those as spares and things like that. If one breaks or someone else needs ones, we retain those for that purposes, and then kind of the rest or the ones that aren't as good a condition, we go ahead and recycle those. But we've never received any money for recycling those. And so we have had a few staff members who've kind of mentioned, hey, are you selling any of those? Is there an opportunity for us to purchase some of those old laptops? And so it's only been a few people here and there, it hasn't been a lot, but it's something in talking with the I T department, we thought maybe it's worth kind of giving it a try and see how it goes. And so again, we have twenty laptops, all those devices would be wiped, they'd be restored to their factory defaults, they'd go through a quality check, and all the software would not be on there other than the original default operating system that came with the machine. Terms of the pricing, we'd sell them for basically fair market value. My plan was to look at eBay, see what they're selling for, probably take off the seller fees that we wouldn't incur, and then also the shipping costs, and that would arrive at a selling price. So I think for these, it would be around sixty dollars is what we were thinking. And basically, we'd make the staff aware that they're available, we'd give it a period of time, and we'd collect all those people who are interested in potentially purchasing one. If there's more than twenty that are interested, we would do some kind of lottery system, and then based on who gets them this time around, they'd be kind of at the end of the line for the next round of laptop sales if this goes well. And so we think it's a good thing, it'll bring in some extra money for the district, maybe around twelve hundred dollars of revenue, give staff an option to kind of get an affordable laptop, maybe for their kids or just to have an extra one at the house, and then obviously, at least for the time being, reduces kind of electronic waste, and we get something for it other than just sending it to a recycler. And so we're asking for approval to dispose of those laptops, and then I will work with the I T department to actually offer those for sale and collect the money, and we'll see how the program goes.
Dave, I have a quick question. Do we have a par level that we would set on ones we would need, want to keep, like a certain quantity we want to have in case students move in, or we have, I'm sure they get damaged and lost over the course of the year?
Yeah, so these are for the staff as opposed to students.
Oh, those aren't for students.
Yeah, so we obviously have a inventory of Chromebooks for students as they come in and things like that, but we will do the same as well here. I'm sorry if I wasn't clear. We still have spares and things like that. This is the inventory above what we need, basically.
Oh, so the twenty is over?
Over, correct, yeah. So he already has, Trent, our I T specialist, already has laptops set aside as spares in case that need would arise.
Okay, thank you.
And Dave, there's no warranty or anything, it's just, you're getting a sixty dollar laptop that's what about four or five years old?
Hmm.
So.
Yeah, and so the bill of sale clearly says as-is, no warranty, condition you get it in, we don't service it. That's all very clear on the bill of sale that anybody who purchases one would have to sign off on.
Not refundable, not returnable.
Not refundable. It breaks tomorrow. But the ones that are in really poor condition, we will not be putting into the pool, those will be recycled.
Great, thank you.
Any further questions? Excellent, thank you very much. Next up, item seven is the quarterly financial update, which can be found under item seven of the Finance Committee packet. Oh, wait, 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 I skipped one. I'm sorry. It's student fees, item six, student fees for two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six. It appears if I skip one month, I forget how to do this. That can be found under item six of the Finance Committee packet. Mr. Wilkins?
So the write-up in your packet starts with a little bit of a history as far as our fees go. They've actually been waived annually since two thousand and twenty. When we were in COVID, we waived the fees, and that practice has continued. Historically, kind of before we started waiving fees, the district's revenues were about a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for those fees. Again, this is just the books and supplies fees, we'll get into the usage fees here in a second, but that's really less than one percent of the district's revenues, and so that was part of the reason for continuing this practice, to continue to waive those student fees. We do still have usage fees for things like sports and clubs and some of the classes at the high school that require some additional fees for the classroom. Those we have continued to charge the students and the athletes and the people participating in the clubs. Those historically have been increased by C P I, and this particular, for next school year, those would be tied to the two thousand and twenty-four C P I, which saw an increase of two point nine percent. And then I guess I'm looking for feedback, we're not approving anything this evening, just wanted some feedback to better understand if, for next month, when those fees come for approval, if we want to continue to waive that books and supplies fee, and then continue to charge the usage fees with that C P I increase of two point nine percent. That would be the administration's recommendation, but we just wanted to give the committee an opportunity to discuss that before formal approval next month. One other piece, I did get a question about those usage fees for economically disadvantaged students, and yes, there is a provision to waive those fees if they have shown a need where they need some financial assistance, they would not be charged those fees.
Good. Any other questions?
I have one question. If we were to reinstate those, would that alleviate any of the other tax increases that we've done? Would we be able to, moving forward, would that be able to supplement so we wouldn't have to increase the tax levy as much?
I don't believe so. Again, it's, the tax levy is eighty, eighty-five percent of our revenues, and so it's just such a large portion of our revenues where this is less than one percent. So I don't think that they would be an equivalent amount where they could offset one another.
Maybe not the whole amount, but a partial offset?
I mean, I guess it would be two hundred thousand dollars. I don't know how significant an impact that would have on someone's tax levy, I think it would be very small, but it could be something that's considered.
I think when we talked about this years ago, some of the challenge was the fact that people feel like they pay property taxes for the education of their students. That should cover things like books. Why am I paying property taxes and having to pay for things like the fees you have associated? So the board at that time decided, yes, your property taxes will be used for those types of items until we can't financially do it, then we'll look at adding those fees. But I think the board had decided, if it's a pay-to-play or something above and beyond, that's where we would have a fee, but if it's just part of your regular curriculum, not to be adding all of these additional things that should be paid for as part of paying property taxes and having a free education for your child.
I think one of the things that, in looking at what has the most significant impact for our learning community, just looking at two students, I mean, these are twenty-three, twenty-four figures that, in the comparison, but for two high school students, that's five hundred and eighty-four just in the student fees. And, you know, looking at the, with the impact of the levy, that's two thirty-seven on a household. You know, and there's families that have many more than, you know, two kids in that level. So I think as far as helping financially our learning community, this has a significant impact.
So it's helping our taxpayers who also have students in the district?
Correct.
So if we would take this away, it would increase the taxes, effectively the cost of living for those, the families of our students.
I really do think, we talked about it before, the idea was you should be allowed to have a free education, and so that's why people pay property taxes, and it seemed like, for lack of a better way of describing it, double-dipping if you're paying property taxes and you're being asked to pay fees. So it was really about feeling like you're double taxing people who have students versus those that are signing up for things above and beyond our core curriculum, that's where we add those additional fees.
And I think in our fee schedule, we've differentiated fees you have to do, you know, to attend school you have to pay versus those that are more elective. I think we've done a good job dividing those two.
I thought we waived these, I thought this was a COVID wave. Am I remembering that correctly? That the decision was made during COVID?
The timing was right in terms of feeling like there was a lot of financial strain on the community, but I think that's where we had that deeper dive conversation as to what should a student expect to be have free and what should be charged above and beyond. And so that's where the line was drawn. But if at some point the board wanted to have a bigger conversation about why want to include fees again and maybe give some tax relief, that definitely is a conversation that we can have with you, and we'll do whatever you decide, but I just wanted to give some historical background as to why fees came into place, and COVID gave us a chance to reflect whether or not we were essentially double charging people who had students when they should get a free education.
Would we be able to calculate what the decrease in taxes would be on average for?
Dave, well, on average, we could definitely calculate that, but I think in aggregate, you said it was about two hundred and some thousand dollars?
That's correct.
So.
So you would take two hundred thousand dollars divided by our property taxes of thirty-five million or whatever they might be, and that's the incremental you would see for the average household. So I'm not saying that every dollar doesn't count, I'm just trying to explain that I think the larger discussion was what should be free as part of your education and what makes sense to add on because of electives, choices, being on sports, signing up for specific things.
The reason why I ask that question is because, yes, we lower the taxes by two hundred thousand divided by the levy, but we'd be increasing households with students by, I think Pam, you said?
Well, five eighty-four, that's just two high school students, I mean, you know, the figures are.
So and that's it, it's like you're going to have what I would assume, given those numbers of two hundred thousand over forty-something million, that's a small percentage. So it can't be decreasing people's taxes that much, but we're definitely increasing the cost of living for our families that have students.
And then if you add on the usage fees, so I'm just thinking, I have three children, and so I would just keep adding that, and then would I let them play football, would I let them join, you know, the sport, you have to, I think, make that choice as a family, and I just, I think the more the kids are involved and invested in school, the better the community and the better for the kid. And so whatever we could do to make it more comfortable for families, I think, is how we should go.
And so I'll give my opinion, this is my opinion. I feel like we shouldn't charge fees to families. I think it should be a free education, but I think when school districts struggle, that's one more way for them to balance the budget. We're not there, and so I feel the practice of continuing to charge book fees and things that are, should be included as their free education is something that if we're able to financially not charge, we should go back to, I think the true intent of the law was when they said it was a free education.
So I have a question, if you say districts that struggle, so the other ones that you gave us in comparison, like Elmhurst and Indian Prairie, are they struggling? Is that why they're charging? Because every other district is charging fees except us.
They are, and it's a personal choice, and so you would have to ask them as to why they continue to charge fees. I just, again, feel like we had a lengthy discussion as to what we thought was appropriate, and I know I'm looping, but the decision was financially we could afford not to charge fees.
And because it's less than one percent of the total revenue, it's not having an impact on finances?
And that's part of it, but I don't think that was a critical part of the decision to be able to say what should be free and what shouldn't be free.
Got it.
And we don't know if these other districts that had that discussion. I mean, sometimes it just becomes routine that they charge student fees, but it was something that we looked at as, how could we help families, especially those that were struggling? Paula, the two elementary students is two ninety-six, so we'll add a third one on there. But that was our discussion, and we don't know if those other schools had that discussion.
And I think it was part of a bigger conversation, where I think we abated about two million dollars over a few years of property taxes, looking at our finances and trying to find a balance between what we thought was necessary and what we felt that we would be able to do to decrease not only fees but also people's property taxes. There's not a right or wrong answer to answer your question, Kate. Would we be able to decrease the levy by the two hundred thousand dollars? Absolutely. Is that a shift that we want to put back onto parents to be able to say, I know it's a free education, but we're re-implementing fees? That's probably a larger conversation we would have to have amongst you, and then probably we'll explain to the community why.
Does that suggest we should put this into the agenda for further discussion later? This is an annual discussion, so even if we choose to, you know, move forward one way or the other, we can revisit this again this time next year and reverse or alter the decision.
What's the date for approval of the fee schedule?
There isn't an exact date, but I think ideally we'd like to have the discussion now and then approve it in March so that we can start to advertise it in our student handbooks, but if we needed to take one more month to be able to have those conversations, we can come to a final decision in March, right? Because normally in February is where the board approves it.
We normally approve it in February, but we have extended it to March before. I think the only challenge is kindergarten potentially, I think those registrations are typically earlier, but that doesn't mean we have to go through the process of billing until a future year if we decide to, or down the road if we decide to re-implement it. So we could wait until March if this wants to be discussed in February.
Or we're just looking at that one piece of information, correct, of how much that would impact?
I think that's part of it, but I think bringing it back, because it's coming, this is coming to a board, a formal board meeting for an agenda vote, correct?
Yes, in February.
And you'll be able to bring back the dollar amount to the February meeting?
What dollar amount exactly would you like?
What we would anticipate receiving if we reinstated the fee schedule that we previously had.
In terms of if that was not part of the levy, if we reinstated the fees but then reduced the levy, is that what we're asking for? I'm sorry if I'm confused.
Just how much total would come from that? How much total is coming from the increase in taxes and what the difference would be, the partial offset between?
So I feel like it would be something to the effect of, if we reinstated fees, it would be, using an example, two hundred thousand dollars. If we were to offset that to our levy, that would be a point zero zero one percent decrease in our levy, which would probably impact an average taxpayer by, fill in the blank. Is that kind of the information you want for the next board meeting?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. Is that clear? Yes.
And I think we can still bring it to a vote in February then, right?
I don't see a reason why not, we could probably make certain we have enough time in the finance meeting to discuss it and then bring it to a regular vote. Any further questions, discussion? No? All right, thank you very much. Back on track, item seven is the quarterly financial update that is found under item seven of the Finance Committee packet. Mr. Wilkinson once again.
There is a packet included, or a write-up included in your finance packet, which has a narrative of the quarterly financial report as well as the financial statements for that quarterly financial report. So I'm not going to spend too long, just touch on a few items since we do have kind of a tight time window here. Interest income, we're halfway through the year, and we've collected about sixty, sixty-seven percent of our budgeted income. It's a little bit higher than we would anticipate this time of year, but we do have a, some of those investments that have matured earlier in the year are at a higher interest rate because we're in a falling interest rate environment currently. And so I still expect to get a hundred percent of our budget income, but that will taper off slightly as we work through the rest of the year because those investments maturing are at lower interest rates. State revenues, state continues to make timely payments, which is great. Some of you may have been on the board where there was a period of time where those were more and more delayed. The only reason we're not at the fifty percent is the transportation funds ended up getting received in January versus December, but we've already received those payments. But those are some significant dollars that we get reimbursed from the state, and they often just don't quite make that December thirty-first cutoff. On the expenditure side, salaries and benefits are on track, they're not at fifty percent just because of the timing of our payments with our ten-month staff and the accrual basis of accounting. Capital outlays, obviously that's significant expenditures related to the renovations at the junior high over the summer, and then other objects were at fifty-four percent of our tuition budget for both special education and our kind of alternative education programs. In terms of kind of the overall trends, expenditures are a little bit lower at this time than they were last year, but that's primarily just related to the timing of when we're receiving some of our invoices. In particular, for SACID, there's some occupational and physical therapy invoices that we had received at this point last year, but we have not yet received those from SACID, those costs are still coming for those services, but those are going to end up hitting most likely in the third quarter as opposed to the second quarter. And then we also have a few transportation invoices that have been received but not yet paid, and so we'll most likely pay those in January, and so that'll kind of catch us up to where we were at in terms of last year. Fund balances still remain strong, and that concludes my quarterly financial update.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? No? Excellent, thanks for that concise summary. So I see we are at item eight, which is agenda topics for future Finance Committee meetings. Does anyone have anything they wish to add other than the aforementioned discussion on fees? Actually, I should note, I should note that myself. All right. Well, with no other agenda topics, with, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
So that would be Pam and then Ms. Foster. All right, so the Finance Committee meeting is adjourned at seven thirteen. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone.